Good evening, welcome to our first board meeting of the year. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Superintendent, you have an introduction to make.
I do. Well, first of all, welcome and Happy New Year to everyone. Hope you had a wonderful holiday. I'm very pleased this evening to introduce to you our student representative from Leesburg High School. Her name is Reagan Young. We'll hear from her in just a few minutes, but I'll tell you a little bit about Reagan. She's taken honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses, and will have 22 dual enrollment credit hours upon graduation. She is ranked fourth out of a class of 289 and has a 4.93 weighted GPA. She has been involved with Student Government Association, National Honor Society, Future Farmers of America, Triad, HIQ, Senior Class Committee, and cheerleading. She has volunteered her time preparing baskets for the homeless and for those affected by the hurricanes. She's participated in Christmas food drives, coat drives, and at church functions. She is working at St. James Episcopal Church, caring for children, newborn to six years old, and also working at American Telecommunications assisting with billing, banking, and errands. I don't know how you find time to do all of that, but we'll look forward to hearing from you, and I want to welcome her family here. Her parents are here, her grandfather, and her friends, so welcome.
All right, welcome. We have, this time, have changes, additions, amendments, and deletions to the agenda. I do have two comment cards that are specific to items, so Board members, if we can pull 11.02 and 8.09 for comments. And we also have an emergency item. Do you want to speak about that? I believe it's due to timeframe, but...
It is. We have one emergency item that you have before you. It's an overnight temporary duty elsewhere for David Haas with Lake Hill School to attend the Florida Standards Alternative Assessment Alignment Study.
So we will deem that an emergency item and consider that as well. Any others? Okay, seeing none. Approval of minutes?
I recommend approval of the minutes from the Executive Session for litigation, December 11, 2017, and the regular school board meeting, December 11, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's five zero. We have no representation tonight and no public input that's not specific to an agenda item, so we will go straight to Ms. Young.
Good evening. My name is Reagan Young, and I am the Student Government President of Leesburg High School. Thank you to the Lake County School Board for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am honored. Within this past school year, student government and our campus as a whole have accomplished so much and strive to keep improving. The Student Government Association is a prominent group of intelligent student leaders led by our amazing sponsor, Mr. Evan Bringle. I am very proud to have been a part of this flourishing association for four years now. The organization partakes in various projects throughout the year, and our main project at the moment is a combined community service project with another club on campus. SGA, or the Student Government Association, has teamed up with FFA, the Future Farmers of America, for our food drive. Throughout the month of January, we will be working diligently to construct food packages to send to those in need. Leesburg High School consists of many important and hardworking clubs and organizations like so, and SGA has had the pleasure to work alongside so many of them. This and other service projects all contribute to Leesburg High School's participation in the Jefferson Service Awards, a nationally recognized program for community service originally created by the Kennedys that we were proud to rank silver in last school year. Around school, we have so many things to be proud of. Our boys' basketball team is nearly undefeated. We have a state female golf champion. Our swarm of sound band program continues to bring prestige to our campus. And as I'm sure many of you know, we are home to the Florida State Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Tammy Jerkins. It's a pretty exciting time to be in LHS Yellow Jacket. Student involvement is a very important aspect in high school, which is why SGA encourages student volunteers to aid us in all of our projects. In the beginning months of school, various volunteers worked together with our 21 student government representatives to put on our multiple homecoming events for the week. With the help of so many students, Leesburg High School was able to put on homecoming events which the Lake County community loved attending, such as our Powderpuff Game, our Parade on Main Street, and our Homecoming Game. My personal favorite moment of student activities from this school year was the SGA Spirit Day. On this day, we kicked in the beginning of the school year by passing out ice pops and had games set up all over the courtyard for students per taken to win prizes. It cost our students nothing, and we were able to interact with and give prizes to hundreds of our peers. That was the most school spirit I have ever witnessed. It was definitely a great day on Leesburg High School campus for all students. As you can see, Leesburg High School is flourishing throughout this school year and only continues to move upward and onward. Myself, along with many other students, can vouch that we have had an amazing experience at LHS. Between our wonderful new principal, Mr. Randolph, the amazing SGA sponsor, Mr. Bringle, all of our great teachers, and the support we get from Lake County community, the students at Leesburg are very gracious. Thank you again for inviting me to come represent Leesburg High School and the Student Government Association. It has been an honor that I wish to repeat.
Thank you very much, Ms. Young.
Thank you.
Very nicely done. Congratulations on everything so far.
Thank you so much.
See you again. So, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to note, at the board's request, I contacted the attorney for the Teachers' Union, FEA, regarding the best and brightest lawsuit with the idea of trying to find if there was some way to get us out of the lawsuit without spending any money. Not surprisingly, they had no solution to be able to do that and felt it was necessary that they were going to have to keep all of the counties in the lawsuit. So at your direction, I'm going to be contacting Mr. Dietzen, who's representing a number of other counties, so that we can do it in the most economical manner possible, which I'll send around a list of how they're going to charge us as part of the entire pool of folks and how they divide that up. So we'll have an answer filed on behalf of the Lake County School Board by next Wednesday. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we are on our agenda, consent agenda.
Recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 8.08, 8.10 to 10.10.
So moved.
Second.
Did you have a question? It's discussion now. I have a...
Does she want to include the emergency item?
No.
No?
Sorry.
I believe I have to take that separately as an emergency item.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we will come back to 8.09. So at this time, Mrs. Cronin?
Good evening and Happy New Year, Superintendent and board members. And I apologize because I really didn't look this up. I wanted to look it up to see what this involves, if it's just cell phones, or are we paying for wireless service? I'm not sure what it is, but it's a pretty high number, and I think it's time we start looking at all of our contracts that we have out and see what we can do to make them less money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin.
That was actually the intent of that item. We did look at our contract, which is currently with Sprint, and we had staff that met with representatives from the various telecommunications companies to find out which one would provide the best service at the lowest rate and have settled on Verizon. There is overall cost savings, plus there is extended services, and I know Dr. Wheeler can tell you specifically the extent of all of those services. But just so that you know, that that was the absolute purpose of that, and we saved about $19,000 on that contract as a result of his hard work and the committee that worked on that contract. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify that.
Okay, so on that item, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend approval of the Verizon Wireless Mobile Communication Services Contract.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, I guess I should say, the second goes to Sandy. Okay? And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And that's why I would pause, because 11.02 is already on our discussion item. So we'll invite you to come up, Mr. Tibbetts, when we get to 11.02, but we'll start with 11.01. Okay, so we have 11.01, the evaluation of Mr. Mock.
Yes, Madam Chairman, your board policy requires you to go through an evaluation of Mr. Mock on an annual basis. The board policy sets out the dates and deadlines to be able to do that. We have moved forward and are, I believe, are within those dates and deadlines. I brought an additional copy of what's on file with Ms. Challenger, if anybody was like one, before you go tonight. What it is, is the five evaluations and the summary evaluation where we take all of the marks, grades of one through five, from each board member and indicate on a master evaluation how that board member evaluated each of the different items under the five categories or five goals. We also added at the end of each goal, all of the language that was presented by each board member to evaluate those goals for Mr. Mock. We come out with a chart at the very back of the evaluation, which indicates an average by area, and there are five, 10, 26 areas that were evaluated under Mr. Mock's document, and he comes out with an average score from one to five of 4.186. And then we also show, more for informational purposes, the average for each board member, which came out to 4.183. Now, realistically, mathematically, those numbers ought to be the same, but it was only three one-thousands off, so I didn't want to spend any time looking for the one number that's missing somewhere. So what we need to do tonight is to accept the final evaluation of the District of the Director of Internal Auditing, 2017, 2018.
You've heard the recommendation? Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Perfect. Is there any discussion? Okay, I would like to take the time to say thank you to Mr. Mock. I know that when I sit with him, and I've had the privilege of being the auditor conduit for the board for the last two years, and so Mr. Gamble will be taking that position, but I always feel like when I leave, man, I really need to make more time to talk to him, because every recommendation that I feel like you come forward with has been thoroughly studied, that you have saved millions of dollars for this district, and we appreciate the work that you do and the diligence that you do it with. We appreciate the relationship that you've built with the staff as well. So I'm glad to hear that your work is commendable, and you should know that this board member thinks so too. So without any more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, Mr. Tibbetts, 11.02.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, Board Members, Superintendent Cornigay. First, let me wish you a Happy New Year. May it be healthy, joyous, and filled with great education for our kids. I want to comment tonight on your proposal regarding naming of school facilities. First of all, to say how wonderful it is that you've proceeded and created the opportunity to finally recognize a living person. And I would suggest that, as you look at the policy presented to you tonight, that I would very much like to see you strike in Article Two, Number Five, actually, it's Article Number Five. Facilities shall not be named for living individuals. Why? Before you eliminate acknowledgement for living people, think about the absurdity of do great things, but we're not going to tell you about it until you're dead. Secondly, as we talk about naming of facilities, it brought to mind the terrible state our budget is in, and the opportunity that you have as a board to change how you name things to raise millions of dollars for the school district. As a for instance, every high school in the district seems to be named for a location. But I'll bet that there are a number of people that for $500,000 would love to have the Dodd High School, the Mathias High School, and so on. Maybe you don't have that kind of money. Maybe you only can afford to have the gym name for you. We'll do that for $100,000. You can't afford that. How about a seat in the auditorium at 50? We'll give you a whole seat instead of a brick to the library for $50. We'll let a seat be named for you. Take that money, put it in a pool as bonuses to your teachers, and I guarantee you, your retention rate will go up significantly. Your teacher satisfaction will go up significantly. And guess what? You can do it for free. All you got to do is change your policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbetts. Okay, you have a recommendation, Superintendent?
I recommend final approval of revisions to Policy 8.54, Naming of School Facilities.
Thank you for the recommendation.
Madam Chairman?
It's a public hearing, sorry.
The matter before the board is final approval of amendments to Policy 8.54, Naming of School Facilities. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this particular policy, please come forward to the podium at this time. Madam Chairman, I don't see anyone coming forward and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Okay. Now, Superintendent, you have a recommendation.
I do. I will repeat my recommendation to approve the final revisions to the Policy 8.54, Naming of School Facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to completely agree with Mr. Tibbetts. I also don't think it should be limited to teachers of the year, like the limitations we have on it, because Martin Luther King would be great, Christian McCullough would be great. There's a lot of amazing historic people that things can be named after as well. It is my understanding, though, that everything is being, that we had hired a company called Neola to look through our board policies and that they're in the progress of doing that. So will this be one of the policies that'll come back to us?
All policies are going to be revised, and any changes will be coming back to you. So if there are any recommendations that you would like to be included in that policy, they'll be before you at that time, and you can make any changes, but we can go ahead and begin the work on those revisions.
Thank you.
I'd just like to note that, and I expected, the reason you came up is that we named specifically some areas that living people, that is, those that win Teacher of the Year or Principal of the Year, or Classified Worker of the Year, but School Board Member of the Year was left out. So maybe as we're revising those policies.
Well, Madam Chairman.
Not that it would affect anybody on the board now, but...
Right.
When the complex was built off of Lang Park Road years ago, when it moved from Lake Tech over there, actually, VOTech at the time it moved there, it originally came out as Kim Bragg Center.
Right.
And something happened, and then this policy came into play, and then that name was removed. But like I say, that's an individual that he put a lot of time and effort...
And still does.
...into VOTech and all, and I would, along with what Dr. Tibbetts is talking about, he would not qualify in this category, but that would be something that I would look forward, that we rename that facility after him in the future if it's possible.
I'd be a thousand percent on board with that.
And there's no doubt, I think we're going to have to talk about this policy some more. Superintendent of the Year is not on there, and I bet we're going to have one of those very soon too, right? But my other understanding is that we need to go ahead and give this one a final approval tonight, because 11.03 hinges on its approval. So we'll go ahead and, I think, support it tonight, but that doesn't mean the conversation's over for me on this one.
So support it tonight, and I know it's the initial, and then we'll revise with Neola. Is everybody on the same page with that then?
That was my understanding.
Perfect. Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, 11.03. Mr. Randolph, welcome. Leesburg High's proud principal tonight. You've got lots of reasons to celebrate here this evening.
It's a great day to be a jacket, for sure. So I would like to say thank you for revising that policy, because it is with great pleasure that I announce the Leesburg High School, the Leesburg community's approval of Leesburg High School's School Advisory Council recommendation to rename the Media Center to the Tammy Jerkins Learning Center at Leesburg High School in honor of the 2018 Florida Teacher of the Year, Ms. Tammy Jerkins. During an open hearing on December 14th, the Leesburg community voted unanimously to approve the name change of the Media Center. I am asking for the board to consider the name change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph.
I recommend approval to rename the Media Center at Leesburg High School, the Tammy Jerkins Learning Center at Leesburg High School.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, yes, go ahead, Dr.
I just wanted to say that I'm over the moon with this. I think there isn't anyone who deserves it more. I think Ms. Jerkins is an amazing math teacher and completely represents us as Teacher of the Year.
Did you have her?
I didn't. I wish. I missed out, although I had a really great math teacher for four years straight. So I just, you know, I'm thrilled for this, so I'm happy for it to go forward.
And I would like to say thank you to everybody that participated in making it happen, and in such a timely manner too. So I know that there was a lot of effort put into that by numerous amounts of people, so thank you to all those folks. So, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none? So we are ready to go on to the Superintendent's Report. Our emergency item? Oh, we have our emergency item, thank you. I broke that down.
This was a time issue, so I would ask that you consider approving the temporary duty leave for David Haas at Lake Hill School to attend the Florida Standards Alternative Assessment Alignment Study that does occur January 16 through the 18th, and there is no cost to the district.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dodd? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was five zero. Now we're going to your report.
Yes. So at this time, all taxing authorities, which includes us, must schedule the tentative and final budget hearing dates to levy the required military rate and approve the 1819 budget. Ms. Briggs is asking that you consider the tentative hearing to be scheduled for Monday, July the 23rd, 2018, and the final hearing for September the 10th, 2018. We have to establish our dates, along with our county commission, who's already set theirs, prior to the other taxing authorities being able to set theirs. So it's a timely issue as well, that we go ahead and get these dates on the calendar so that they can set theirs to follow.
Is anybody opposed to those two dates?
Can you name them again? Sorry. What were they?
The tentative hearing is Monday, July the 23rd, and the final hearing is set for September the 10th. This is in accordance with the TRIM guidelines. If there's no opposition, we'll give Ms. Briggs a go-ahead to go ahead and follow those dates.
I've got five nods now.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And also, I want to say congratulations to East Ridge Middle for being selected an avid national demonstration school. They now serve as a site for other educators to learn about avid strategies and how to effectively implement in the classroom, and so it was a great honor for East Ridge, as well as Lake County, as they put us on the map with avid, which is the goal, to prepare students for college and career readiness, which is our mission. And so we congratulate them. And also want to thank the Claremont Lowes for their partnership with Eustace Heights Elementary. You saw that in the paper. That's a tremendous partnership, and we appreciate all that they're doing for our children and families. And a minute ago, you mentioned Neola. So Neola has been busily working with our staff. We've gotten several sections of the policies revised. They would like to have a workshop with you all on February the 5th, at our usual time at 9:30, where they would like to review with you the sections covering board governance and organization. If that date looks all right for you, we'll go ahead and set that.
It's a workshop already, right?
This is a workshop. It's tentatively held for a workshop. We'd like to use it for that Neola time to workshop the policies.
February 5th?
Yes. February 5th?
Perfect. 9:30.
Yes, at 9:30. And then just a reminder that our next workshop will be held on the 29th at 9:30, and we'll cover the 1819 budget timeline. We'll be kicking that off then, along with an update on student projections and changes to the district's allocation formula will be on that agenda for the 29th. Okay. And then we do have a few letters of condolences. We've sent letters to Jack Hoppenstat and Michelle Hoppenstat, who is our Director of Human Resources, and the loss of his uncle, Carl Summerall; to Trelle Mott, the principal at Taverri's Middle School, and the loss of her uncle, John Fowens. We also sent a letter on behalf of the board. Is there a question?
No, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. To the family of Representative Don Hanfelt, who was one of our representatives. We did that on behalf of myself and the board, who we lost him unexpectedly during the holidays, which is a tremendous loss for us. He was a supporter of ours and was helping to champion our appropriation, and so we just, he'll be missed greatly in his support of our school district. We also sent letters to Liz West, who's our Director of Federal Projects. She lost her mother over the holidays, June Louise Reed. And to Amani Williams, a community resource liaison who works in our communications department with Ms. Owens. She lost her grandmother, Noreen Williams, over the holidays. Our condolences to all of them.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Board member comments? Mr. Mathias?
We are very blessed that we have student representatives come and participate in the governance of the district and get an idea, and always share their perspectives of things going on in their schools. So Reagan, welcome, and it was great hearing your report. It especially meant a lot to me, because I got a phone call from, let's just say, a proud grandfather. And when I came to town, your grandfather was very kind to me and welcomed me, and has always been an advocate of education. And I can tell you that I could hear the buttons pop off his shirt as he was speaking about you. So it's a great pleasure to see him in the audience, and also, I want to say a special prayer for Maddie, who was also very kind to me, and so to your grandmother.
Thank you so much.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Okay, Dr. Burns?
I wanted to alert the board and the public about, I had previously mentioned Representative Placentia's bill, which is HB 427. This is a bill that will, that would allow local control of how we pay our teachers. Currently, all new teachers are required to be on a merit pay schedule, and that merit pay schedule is based in large part on how the children test in the classes. And Senator Placentia has put forward a bill that would allow local control of how we choose to do that, so we could choose to have the evaluations be test-based or not. And I think, I don't know if people recognize the impact that would have, because testing is never a problem in itself, but when it becomes high stakes, that is not how standardized tests were designed to be used. So if we were to be able to decouple standardized testing from the tests our kids took at the end of the year, it would just become the test at the end of the year, as opposed to this big hoopla, which would be really good for the education of our children. So as of, during Christmas, Senator Mayfield actually signed on to this bill, which allows it now to have a sponsor in the House and a sponsor in the Senate, which allows the bill to go forward. So I don't know if this will eventually be a multi-year bill, is my suspicion, but it is a substantial change and a good move forward by the legislature. So I wanted to bring that up. I also wanted to thank Reagan Young, because you spoke so eloquently and brought us up on everything you do, and as a previous college and high school cheerleader, I too don't know how you get all of that done. So thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's all I had. I hope everyone had a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Bob?
All right. Well, I'd like to extend my sincerest thanks to the Superintendent, as well as Dr. Landry and the entire group at Student Services for being attentive, responsive, and sensitive to the needs of the community with that Reach event that was held in Neola before the holidays. I know a few of us had a chance to come check it out. It was just so refreshing to see so many partners from the community come forward, providing resources and making themselves available for our, for our students and for their families. And I know that initially, certainly, our concentration is on that media area, but I heard a lot of feedback from folks from the other ends of the county saying, this was so fantastic, we'd love to see it expanded. So I'll pass along that bit of feedback, that it was just so well received and very well done. So thank you for that. I, in reading Sherri Owen's media summary today, I had the same refreshing, optimistic outlook that you did when I saw about the pending bill there to eliminate student test scores and teacher evaluations. That's something that I've long said, doesn't make any sense, especially because, well, one, even if you put aside the argument that it's not a valid measurement of teacher performance, so many of our teachers are still evaluated today based on subjects that they don't even teach. Doesn't make any sense to me. So certainly, I've got the sense of optimism going into this session, that the last couple years, they've tried to peel back some of the pain and strife that they've put upon us, and maybe this will be the year that all that goes away. So fingers crossed.
Yes, definitely. Mr. Campbell?
Just a couple of things. Congratulations, Reagan, for being here, and your presentation was great. And Happy New Year 2018 to everyone. Just before the holidays, the Educational Foundation put on a luncheon for the employees that work in the outside areas and all, and we appreciate their, their effort that they did for us and all that was done, and everyone that was there, I think, enjoyed it immensely. And Dr. Tibbetts, just real quick, I appreciate you bringing that, that up, because it does, I know a couple of different things that I could bring to mind, but anyway, I appreciate you bringing that up, and it's something that can be considered, because we do have employees and people out there in the community that deserve recognition. So I appreciate that, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I went to the Central Florida School Board Coalition meeting today, and it's interesting, you guys are speaking about the one bill that's, that's out there, because we discussed multiple bills, right? So my plan was to type these up for you guys and bring you a copy, so I would like to do that. So I will email that to Natalie, so she can get it out to you all. There, I think what Mr. Dodd said is right on target. There are some things in here, not just related to student, I mean, that, that one bill alone that would eliminate teacher, or student testing from teacher evaluation would be significant win for every district. But there are some in here that would penalize charter schools that use, knowingly or unknowingly violate state statute in their spending and so forth with their capital LA dollars. And so before, it was they had to knowingly violate, and it's really easy to say, oh, I didn't, I didn't know that, and violate that and get away with it. And now they're trying to tighten those strings. They're also asking in another bill, and I've got all these written down, they're asking another bill for them to actually say, this is what we're using the funding for, and it has to be up to certain standards, similar to what we face every day. There was, there's one that eliminates retention, third grade retention, and there was like four companion bills that went with it. So, well, I've never thought that had legs before, to hear that it has so many companion bills was quite enlightening. So one of the statements that they said that left, that kind of left resonate, resonation with me, and similar to what I feel like our superintendent has been working on, is that relationship. So rather than just pinpointing, we don't want this one, we don't want this one, we don't want this one, saying, we can live with these, like, we may have to hold our nose and support you on these, but these are, we're going to go through, these are amazing. We really appreciate you doing these types of things. So I would, I know that this board has been, and so as a superintendent, has been trying to advocate for those types of things, but if we could reach out, when you guys get this email, like, I'll highlight the ones and just say, thank you for these. These look really good. That, that one of them, our Orange County representative said she actually got an email back, which she has never gotten an email back when she's reached out, and this time she said, I really am appreciative of this, and they emailed back and said, oh, thank you so much, we were so glad to hear from you. So if we can maybe work hand in hand with them, because we do feel like they're working in our favor right now. So I'll, I'll type these up, because you probably couldn't read my handwritten scratch anyway, if I just gave you this copy. The other thing that they spoke a lot about was our testing for our graduating seniors that are actually, the students that have come over are trans and students, and so there's more information apparently that's coming about that, but nothing's been settled yet. That's what they kept saying, is we still know today everything we knew before, but everybody's talking about it, but nothing's changed for those students. So high school graduation and providing tests in alternate language for those students if they're going to be required to take the tests, which were things I really hadn't thought of, to be honest with you. So very interesting things that were discussed. They did speak about Autronicon, which is this weekend at the Orlando Science Center, and it is four days of the latest and greatest tech. So they're going to have people, all of the masters of technology and drone and latest virtual reality, they will all be at the Orlando Science Center. So that kind of piqued my interest. So I wanted to pass that on to all of you, that if you're able to go to the Orlando Science Center, this sounds like a good weekend to go. And I also wanted to thank the Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Breakfast. We had that on Friday. A couple of us were able to attend. Superintendent spoke and brought some well wishes from the district, and it is always just a wonderful event. If you've never heard Dr. Smalley speak, I would encourage any of you to go to her church, where she is the pastor there, because she is amazing, and she can move a crowd, and she said all of the right things about education, and it's very, very refreshing to see that kind of support in the community. So we just wanted to thank them for inviting us and holding that breakfast again. So without any objection, we are going... You adjourned? Yes. Because you're talking about legislation. I am. I don't know that I have sent to you that our House bill for the ed appropriation for the construction academy at Leesburg High School has been assigned a number. It is House Bill 4145. Yay, yay, yay. Definitely put that on your list. I will be back in Tallahassee in two weeks, so if there are any of these bills that Ms.